It's six o'clock and we will commence the September 19th meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission and we will start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to take your roll call, please.
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Banjo?
Here.
Commissioner McCaver?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Thank you.
And I would ask the Director if there are any agenda modifications that are not on the published agenda?
Yes, there are two supplementals that were given. The first is for item E5 Carпов and the second is for the comments on the zoning reclassifications. We would also ask the Planning Commission to consider continuing item number two Fox Creek Gardens Canotopia Conditional Use Permits to a date uncertain. The applicant has appeared tonight and would like to work to get these back on track.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will move along to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of past minutes. We'll call it the action summary. And we have tonight the minutes of the June 20th Planning Commission. We have the minutes of the July 11th Planning Commission.
It's the old agenda, I guess.
Yeah, the agenda was revised because I guess those weren't ready.
Okay, mine says revised on it. Is that the wrong one?
There was two revised.
Yeah, it's the revised revision.
The revised revision, not the revision, okay. Thank you. We'll get back and we'll start over again. This agenda doesn't have any items D. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no previous agenda minutes to approve.
Okay.
So we go straight to public comment.
All right, we will dispense the minutes and we will go to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on items that are not agendaized tonight, that are not on the agenda and that are within the purview of this commission, which is basically land use decisions, you may approach the podium and do so at this time for items not on the agenda, public comments. Seeing no one, we will close that section of the public comment and we will move along to the consent agenda. And the first item on the consent agenda is the Yoel Bilinski Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area. And this item is recommended for denial. Is there anyone in the audience or any of the commissioners who would like to have this item pulled? I'm set for a full public hearing. Anyone? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Banjo would like that pulled and so that will be a public hearing item. The next item, as the Director indicated, an agenda modifications is the Fox Creek Gardens Canotopia Conditional Use Permit and that has been a request for a continuance. And so we should probably act on that separately from the other consent agenda items. Okay, so that will not be on the consent. It'll be a separate item. The next item is the Rolling Fog LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Myers Flat area. And is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation and who would like to have this item pulled for a full public hearing? Anyone in the audience or any of the commissioners? Seeing no one, we will leave that on the consent. The next item is the Full Sun Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Is there anyone in the audience who's going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation and would like to have this item pulled for a full public hearing? Anyone in the audience or any of the commissioners? Seeing no one, we will leave that on the consent. The next item on the consent is the, I hope I pronounced this right, T. Homer Karopov Conditional Use Permit in the Edersberg area. And this has been recommended for denial. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in opposition to staff recommendation? I see a hand. That will go for a public hearing. The last item on the consent is the Ozanian Parcel Map Subdivision Special Use Permit in the Ferndale area and staff's recommendation is continue to a date uncertain. Is there anyone who has traveled a long distance to speak on this and would not be able to make a hearing that would be a continuance? Anyone? Seeing no one, we will leave that on the consent. And the next item is a kind of a workshop discussion item and so we will stay with what we've gone through on the consent. So on the consent items, we will have item number three, the Rolling Fog LLC. We will have item number four, the Full Sun LLC. And we will have the Ozanian Map Continuance. Those will be the public hearing.
Was number one Yoel Bilski?
A public hearing.
Okay, pulled right. That's right.
Yeah, supervisor, I'm not supervisor. Commissioner Banjo requested that.
Sure. Well, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we act on the staff recommendations for items three, four, and six of the consent agenda.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. The consent agenda has passed. And with that, I would hope that staff could get ready and give us a staff report on the Yoel Bilinski Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. We need to take an action on the continuance of the Fox Creek Gardens to a date uncertain. So I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to continue the Fox Creek Gardens Canotopia Conditional Use Permit to a date uncertain.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. The project is continued to a date uncertain. Now we will move along to staff report on the Yoel Bilski Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for being here. My name is Devin Setfin. I'm a cannabis planner with, sorry, with Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. I'm a planner with the Cannabis Services Division. Okay. For your consideration this evening is a conditional use permit for approximately 3.9 acres of new mixed light cannabis cultivation. The proposed activity takes place on three parcels with a combined area of approximately 515 acres located about six miles southeast of Neyland in the Maple Creek area. I just wanted to make sure that there is no evidence of pre-existing, not to make sure. I wanted to make sure I made clear that there's no evidence of pre-existing cultivation on this site. So staff is recommending denial of the project. The applicant violated county ordinance requirements after the application was submitted, has been unresponsive to county requests for information and efforts to resolve the violations. So in October of 2017, California Department of Fish and Wildlife notified the applicant of 14 separate violations of fish and game code, ranging from diverting water from a class-two stream to building a road across an intermittent class-three stream and replacement of culverts, all without permits. Attachment one of the staff report has a bit more detail on this violation. Planning staff removed the project from processing status on or around December 15th, 2017, to investigate county code violations, which were initiation of cultivation without permits, which could also be seen as an expansion beyond the existing amounts because there were zero square feet as existing. On January 9th, 2018, a site inspection that was conducted by a building inspector verified that unauthorized cultivation occurred in 2017 and that some of that cultivation was in the streamside management area. So I'll go over a brief timeline of the violations and the contact with the applicant. Again, back in October, CDFW issued a notice of violation ranging, or about the 14 separate violations of fish and game code. County staff removed the project from processing in December of 2017 for initiation of new cultivation without permits. We found that there was in excess of 80,000 square feet being cultivated outdoors. Again, January, we had a building inspector go out that confirmed 2017 cultivation without permits. In February of 2018, the department sent a letter to the applicant notifying them of this violation. And in March of 2018, the department actually developed a compliance agreement, which was meant to provide an instrument for a third party to take control of the application or of the project. The violations that were outlined in that compliance agreement included construction and grading without permits, development within the streamside management area, and the cultivation of approximately 80,000 square feet without permits. And the penalty was $140,000. So in May of 2018, the Director actually met with the applicant's attorney to discuss the compliance agreement. And then in May 2019, we actually sent a letter requesting the payment of the penalty in a response to the February 4th, 2018 violation letter. There has been no contact from the applicant, the applicant's agent, or the applicant's attorney since May of 2018. As of today, the violation is still unresolved. The applicant has not provided the requested information. Even if these violations were resolved and the penalties paid, the application remains deficient in many areas, making approval impossible at this time. So this is a photo that was provided by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They were on the site in October of 2017. I chose to use this image as opposed to aerial imagery because it fairly clearly shows cultivation occurring and this cultivation was occurring without permits. The next picture shows the remnants of cultivation. Obviously, they've harvested, but in the background, there's a wet area. So this cultivation is taking place directly in a streamside management area. So we ask that you find the project exempt from SEQA, that they have not operated in accordance with local and state laws, that they've initiated new cultivation without permits, and to adopt the resolution denying the Yoel Bilski project. Happy to take any questions the Commissioners might have at this point.
Any question on the staff report before we do a discussion?
No. It's not really on the staff report, but it's the reason I pulled this item was I don't disagree at all with the counties, what you're doing. I just wanted to get some clarification. If this project is denied, if I understand the ordinance right, there could not be a cannabis, they couldn't reapply to do cannabis on this. So I just want to be clear. If somebody else came in with all the right intentions and did all the things that they have to do to get through, you know, everything with the state and you guys, would they be able to do it? Or is this like blacklisted forever? I just want clarity on that.
No, that's a very good question because we have had some in the past where that would be the case because of the violation of the compliance agreement. This is a little bit of a different situation. They would be able to apply under Cannabis Ordinance 2.0 once they've resolved those violations. So once they've cleaned up the site, we would accept an application for new cultivation under 2.0. And I have recently had a brief conversation with somebody who may be taking over ownership of this site and informed them that that would still be an option. We actually looked at it to make sure that they weren't in any of the impacted watersheds or anything that would prevent application be made. And so it is an option for them at this point. If they were able to resolve these violations, clean up the site, they could apply for new cultivation.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to publicly comment on this, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment and we'll bring it back for a discussion amongst the Commissioners. Say that again? Would you like to comment on this? Okay, we will reopen public comment. Could you speak into the?
No.
My English is bad.
It's not about that item.
I'm on behalf of the T. Homer?
No.
Different.
Okay, all right. We'll close public comment on the Yoel Bilski Conditional Use Permit. We'll bring it back for a discussion.
I just, again, I fully support the staff recommendation and I am curious if, basically, the eligibility of this parcel for another applicant to reapply, that would be contingent not only on resolving the DFW violations, but also on paying the, say, $140,000, I believe it was, violations to the county for code violations. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, yeah. Well, I mean, because it sounds like there was ample reason for that and somebody has to pay that bill if they're going to take advantage of that opportunity. So, yeah, thanks.
Question for staff. This is just more informative from my standpoint, but are you sure that the applicant got the letters that were sent for which there was no response? And the reason I ask that, I do know a lot of these rural folks, a lot of them don't have regular mail service. A lot of them don't have mailboxes. A lot of them, you know, may not really be total full-time residents here. So, you know, do we know that they got the notices?
That's a really good question. I don't think that we do know that they received them. We have been sending correspondence to the P.O. box that they listed when they filed the application and originally, some of the correspondence we sent was getting received at that P.O. box. We have not received any response in well over a year despite us sending correspondence to that P.O. box. So we cannot verify that they've actually gone and picked up their mail, but they've had plenty of time, you know, to receive it if they were still active.
Okay, looking at the timeline that was on the screen earlier, there was, one of them had talked about an attorney, mentioned an attorney for the client. Was any of the letters or the correspondence, was that sent to the attorney of record?
I'm not 100% sure if, maybe the Director could weigh in on that meeting? Okay. Give us just a minute.
Okay. I guess this would be a question for the Director. I mean, if there is legal counsel represented, would it not be normal procedure to copy the counsel of record?
It would be if they put the counsel of record down as the agent. And one of the things that is important to keep in mind here is that I think the attorney actually got involved because there was code enforcement, actually law enforcement action on this parcel. And so the attorney came in to try to resolve that, separate from the application. So it's, if the attorney was on the application, absolutely, we would be sending it to the attorney.
Because I think, you know, to me, normal process would be, as long as I've been involved in, you know, once an attorney does become involved, then he should be part of the loop, whether or not he's listed on the applicant from day one. I mean, he probably wouldn't be because the guy didn't enter into this application. No one's going to get in trouble, would be my guess. So.
If I could, yeah. Nowhere in the application is there an attorney listed. And so the attorney did come in for that meeting, but we don't have anything in this file. We don't have anything from an attorney that they are stating that they are representing this applicant and we don't have a mailing address for that attorney either. So that was not provided to the department.
Noah?
Well, if I may, and again, I'm certainly not giving the benefit of the doubt to this applicant in particular, but just since we're talking somewhat about process and communications, I understand the reasons for using the mail for official documentation being delivered and return and so forth. But in a case like this, did you also, I assume that the applications asked for a phone number and an email address and I'm curious to know if you used those since in some cases that can be a much better way to reach somebody than the mail.
Yeah, we, you know, it is customary for us to look at and when we get no response to reach out to all the contact information that we have in the file. I don't think that we're prepared to tell you that.
Sure. We're talking about a year and a half ago. But that's really what I'm asking is, in a case like this, if you're not getting responses to the mailed notices, you would try the other contact information that you have?
So one example is this February 4th letter that I believe is part of the staff report.
Yeah.
The very top says that it was sent via U.S. mail and email.
And email, right.
As a general practice, I feel comfortable speaking to this. When we're trying to communicate with an applicant, we'll definitely use the U.S. Postal Service. I believe that the ordinance kind of asks us to do that. But we will also follow up with telephone calls or with emails, just to make sure that we're establishing that contact.
I figured that was true and just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
If this application is denied and let's say a new applicant comes along on the same piece of property, is he going to start from day one or is there certain amount of the efforts and energies that went into the initial application? You know, I'm going to make up, maybe he had some consultants on board, whether they're water consultants or biologic consultants, whatever. Is that information available to a new applicant, for example, so that the resources and time and efforts that went into that aren't lost?
It really would depend because the, you know, that information that was prepared is actually owned by the applicant. And so, you know, the new applicant, let's say, could come in and do a Public Records Act request, review the file and gain access to some of that information. They could contact those consultants and, you know, reuse that information. One of the things that I think is important to point out is that this particular file does not have any level of detailed information that really would support it moving through the process in the first place. And so, you know, for that reason and for the reason that they would have to apply under Cannabis Ordinance 2.0, whereas this was 1.0, they would sort of need to start over.
Okay. Mike?
So what happens with the fine, if nobody buys it, it's just sitting there? Is it sold by the county? Is that what happens? Or what happens with that land and/or the fines that are outstanding?
So the fines that are outstanding are currently related to the enforcement action. And they will basically just sit there and our fines for the actions on the property, our primary objective at this point is to get the property cleaned up and restored.
And that would be my second part of the question, was about the cleanup then. Would the, for the cleanup, the cost of that, is the land then taken and sold?
So it could be. That is not where we like, that is not where we start. So basically, the process is, since this is still in the permit process, we don't open a complete code enforcement action on this property. Once this is out of the permit process, if there's no application, then we would initiate code enforcement proceedings to abate the cultivation infrastructure that was left out there and to restore the site. We work with the property owner, assuming we can get ahold of them and they are responsive to do that. If not, then the clock would run and the fines and penalties would accrue for a 90-day period. At that end of that 90-day period, the fines could be anywhere between $300,000 and probably $600,000 in this case. At that point, the Board of Supervisors could impose a lien on the property. Then the next step after lien is then to impose an actual, the name is escaping me, but we would go to court and say, we want this to be actually noted that we are in line to get money from this property if it's ever sold. It's unlikely we would ever get the lien amount, but we may get the amount. Or a new property owner, one of the things that we're finding is a new property owner may want to come in, they will negotiate to abate the things that need to be addressed in exchange for a reduction in the amount of the fines and penalties.
Thank you.
Director, and this may be a question for Counsel, what happens if you're a lender? Where is lender position in this?
It's one of those things that is still not perfected in an actual legal setting to understand exactly where the county ends up in relationship to where lenders are.
Well, Counsel, in your opinion, would the, if the lender had a first deed of trust, would they be ahead of the county with respect to any resale dollars?
Yes, the county, after going through the court process, would be in line, you know, under whoever already had, like if there already was a mortgage on the property, the county would fall in line behind that, is my understanding.
So if the lender had a first deed of trust and the lender took the property back and he now owned the property, then would he become responsible for the cleanup, the abated nuisances?
I think so.
Does that happen on service stations?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because I would think there would be a very, you know, a very similar situation where you've got an abatement cleanup notice.
So when it comes to hazardous materials, the law may be slightly different on service stations and such.
So when it comes to hazardous materials, the law may be slightly different on, on service stations and such. So I, I, I don't think, kinda counsel or I are equipped to, to answer that. That'd require a little bit of research. But in terms of our normal code enforcement actions that are on property, they, they do run with the land, just like a permit runs with the land. A, a, a violation runs with the land also. So one of the things that people have often attempted to do is say, well, you know, I'm gonna sell the property and get out from under it and the violation's gone. It's like, no, the violation's still on the property.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, comments, discussion? I guess if not, we can entertain a motion.
I will move that we find this project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Sequa Guidelines, Section 15270. Make the finding that the project's site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and adopt the resolution denying the proposed Yoel Bilski project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. I, I'd like to maybe just add something for the motion maker's consideration. And it goes back to the, the attorney. And I would feel a lot more comfortable because not knowing whether or not the applicant with the post office box somewhere, really got, he, he may have got one or two of the earlier notes, but did he, has he got notices that basically are saying that, you know, that we're, hey, we're gonna deny you if you don't respond here, you know? And from what I hear from staff, you're not totally confident that he did get, get that notice. There is an attorney involved. What would make me feel more comfortable is if staff perhaps spent a little bit of time trying to track down attorney. I would think if there's an attorney show up someplace, I, I don't know of many attorneys that don't leave cards hanging around, or at least there's a, some kind of a, a, a bar list where you could, you could track that attorney down. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if there was one final notice sent to the attorney who did show up on behalf of the applicant, even though it might've been a little bit different reason why he came other than the application being, being in jeopardy. I would feel a lot more comfortable because, and the reason I, I'm, I'm struggling with this a little bit is that the basic intent, the way I look at the ordinance, is to bring people in, out of the shadows, get them into an area where because of the permit, they respond and they, if there are violations or if there are environmental things that need to be cleaned up, this is the incentive to do it. And I would like to just totally make sure that, that we've exhausted that before we just deny it and kinda maybe turn this into a quagmire. So maybe I might ask the maker of the motion in a second, would, would you amend it to perhaps give staff, say, two weeks to get a response from the attorney? No response in two weeks, then the denial goes through, if that's, if that's a.
If, if I could, whatever you're willing to do, but I think if, if the commission were willing to accept that, we would recommend that you continue it to a date certain, give us the time to make the contact. I, I would like to point out though, that I think, as I recall, the meeting that I had with the applicant was not with the applicant's attorney, but was with the attorney of the person who was trying to reacquire the land. I don't think I ever met with the applicant's attorney.
So the applicant never had an attorney, as far as you know?
As far as I know, the applicant never had an attorney.
Okay, then if that's the case, if, if there's not an attorney hand above record for the applicant, then I suppose I would, I would tend to say I'd look at it in a different light. So I would, I would remove my request to the maker of the motion.
Well, I appreciate you asking the question, but since the staff report did mention that after that meeting, staff took the fairly extraordinary step of creating a compliance agreement, specifically so that a third party could take over this process. But again, if, if there's been no follow-up on that and we have no attorney of record for the applicant itself, and this one honestly doesn't even sound like a close call, you know, there's a lot wrong.
That's fine with me.
So with all that said, let's just go with the motion as proposed.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. And with that, we will move along to item number five, which is the Tia Homar Karaparov Conditional Use Permit in the Edersburg area. If we could get a staff report on that, I'd appreciate it. And I hope I didn't butcher the name too badly.
Thank you again, commissioners. Again, I'm Devin Sutphen. Project for discussion now is a conditional use permit for 22,000 square feet of existing mix-like cannabis cultivation. So the proposed activity takes place on a parcel of approximately 58 acres. It's about three miles north, northwest of the Edersburg area. The parcel is split zoned between TPZ and A's, and AE. And the split zoning is important because no new cultivation is allowed in TPZ zones. The applicant has not provided sufficient evidence of any pre-existing cultivation on this site. However, the registration form does claim that the site has been in cultivation prior to January 1st, 2016, up to 20,000 square feet. So I'll kind of, I wanna make sure that we're kinda clear on the zoning on this. So the, the lower left map shows a red area in the bottom right, that is the, the AE zoning. The entirety of the remainder of the parcel is in the TPZ area. So again, planning staff is recommending denial of this project. The, a 600,000 gallon pond and five greenhouses were constructed without the benefit of county review and all lie directly within that portion that is TPZ. The application was removed from processing on or around March 15th, 2018 because staff reviewed, discovered that new cultivation was initiated without permits. Got a little bit more detail on that later. So this showed a photo shows the site in September of 2015. So these are the environmental conditions, the baseline conditions that were analyzed with the programmatic mitigated negative declaration for the CMM L U O. The next picture is what the site currently looks like. This is from 2018. You see the construction of the five 140-foot by 30-foot greenhouses. In addition to that 600,000 gallon pond, again, without the benefit of county review. So I'll go through a brief timeline of the communication and the violate, and the violation itself. So March 2018, the application was removed for processing for initiation of cultivation without permits. It was approximately 17,500 square feet of greenhouse cultivation and 7,600 square feet of outdoor cultivation. The department sent correspondence in October of 2018 describing the violation and giving the applicant 30 days to provide a response. An agent responded to the violation letter and a settlement was reached on November 9th, 2018. The settlement was a payment of a $42,600 penalty, proof of non-cultivation and restoration of the cultivation site. During that meeting, the agent acknowledged that the cultivation initiated with, without permits was in fact new cultivation. And that is attachment two of the provided staff report. So on March 13th, Steph met with another agent and relayed the same resolution, the payment of the penalty, the removal of all cultivation and the restoration of the cultivation site. And April 13th, 2019, staff again met with another agent and relayed the resolution. So I just wanted to be clear that this is multiple agents that we're dealing with, with this applicant. And we followed up with an email with that agent, April 17th, 2019, and that's attachment three of the staff report. So on April 25th, 2019, the department was contacted by a third party. They conveyed via email that neither they nor the applicant possessed the funds needed to resolve the violation. And that is actually attachment four of the staff report. So imagery from February of this year shows cannabis infrastructure still remaining. Obviously, the pond is still there, but this, the, the five greenhouses, the structures still remain. It appears that there's deprivation tarps nearby. If we move on to the March imagery, it appears that the applicant made one of these greenhouses operational. As seen by the membrane, reapplied to the greenhouse. And then in July of this year, it, this same greenhouse was still seemingly operational. I think the next available image, you know, either later in July or in August, that skin has, has once again been removed. So staff recommendation is for denial. We ask that you find the project exempt from sequa. Make the finding that the project's not in, not, is not consistent with county code because the applicant has not operated in compliance with state and local laws. That an expansion occurred over the pre-existing amount of zero square feet. And the required findings for approval cannot be made because the application is, is also deficient. So we ask that you adopt the resolution denying the proposed project.
Thank you. Any questions by the commissioners on the staff report? Seeing no one, we'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this project, please approach the podium at this time.
I'm sorry, my English is not good, but I will hope so that we understand. I am on the behalf of Tia Homar Karaparov and I am his cousin. And I asking commission to postpone this decision until the next meeting. He has been sick and he will pay before the next meeting. He has reached out of the black button of the planning department today and will pay the fine before the next meeting, he said.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment, please approach the podium. Anyone? Seeing no one, we will close this section of public comment and we will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Mike?
So I have a question for staff. Paying the fine, what does that do for this?
It is one step towards moving the application back into a, a place where it can proceed forward. I, I think that there are several things that need to be considered here though, that there's the payment of the fine, there's the fact that there was work done within the TPZ zone, that all requires restoration. The actual application, there was no pre-existing cultivation, so the only thing that could be permitted is, and I don't know, help me with this, has the AE been determined to have adequate prime soils and slope to allow new cultivation?
I'm, I'm not privy to that information. I'm not a hundred percent sure, Director.
Okay, so basically, we, we, it really is a matter of almost starting from scratch in this. There has been virtually no progress made on the application. It's really been in a holding pattern because we identified the violation. We said that certain things needed to be done. Nothing's been done.
Is this 1-0 or 2-0, Director?
1-0.
So to follow, excuse me, to follow up on that, given that there is no evidence of pre-existing cultivation, then, as you say, the only place on this property that, that could be eligible for cultivation at this point under the existing application would be within the, the portion zone AE. And there is nothing about the change from 1.0 to 2.0, as I recall, that diminishes the capacity of the owner to make such an application. If anything, I think it got easier, didn't it? Because the, the prime soils requirements was lessened or something. So I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, it'd be one thing if, if you'd received a lot of documentations, if the, if the application was three-quarters full or three-quarters complete. But as I hear the director, he's saying that they'd basically have to start from scratch anyway. And a denial of this old, several years old application, which hasn't moved forward, doesn't, doesn't foreclose their options to reapply once they come into compliance and pay their fines. Is, is that a correct understanding, Allah's of staff?
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
So they would be able to reapply under 2.0 in the AE section of the land?
Assuming that they are not in a critical watershed, then yes. And, you know, I, I'm not sure if this is in a critical watershed or not. But one thing I wanna add is, you know, we would potentially, if they had resolved the violation when we first approached them in, towards, I think, the end of last year, I'm not sure on the exact timeline, but we may very well still be back here at, at the planning commission now because they did, again, it appears, cultivate without permits this year and without the state license. And so what has been preventing us from taking code enforcement action is the fact that they're in the permit process. This is why we're here in front of you, is to ask you to remove it from the permit process so that we can actually start some code enforcement action on.
Okay. So now, this is in the Edersburg area, so that would be in the Matoo River. Is, is the Matoo River a critical watershed?
I, I looked at this project. I was just conveying that to Cliff here. This, this project is within an impacted watershed. So currently, under ordinance 2.0, they would not be able to reapply until that impacted watershed is reassessed.
Until the watershed's reassessed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Anyone? Director?
Not sure if this needs to be said, but I will say it just for absolute clarity. The implication there is that we also couldn't convert this to a new cultivation and we have virtually no evidence of pre-existing cultivation, which means it's an application that can't be approved.
That cannot what?
Cannot be approved.
This 1.0?
Under 1.0 or 2.0 because this is in an impacted watershed. They can't just convert it now to new cultivation because there's a resolution identifying that no new cultivation can be permitted in an impacted watershed.
At this time?
At this time.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners?
Well, well, I'll speak frankly and say that the only thing that, that gives me any reason to consider continuing this for one more month, where I think we would have to deny it then, is to somehow help get those fines paid. But it just sounds like for multiple reasons, this can't go forward. And so that almost seems, that seems a bit, you know, dishonest somehow.
Well, what, what I would see on here is that if we deny this and he can't reapply under 2.0, he's never gonna pay the money, this will never get cleaned up. Is that kinda where you were going, Noah?
That's kinda what I mean, but on the other hand, I mean, well, yeah, let's just leave it at that. I, I'd like to see it cleaned up.
So would I.
Yeah.
To me, that's, that's kinda part of the intent of the ordinance is that if there are environmental degradations out there, this ordinance was, was kinda premised on the fact that, that it, it should be a tool to use to help clean it up. be a tool to use to help clean it up. I see a Director Winston over there.
This is the commission discussion, sorry for Winston during your deliberation, but the purpose of cleaning sites up are to clean up existing cultivation sites, and I just want to remind the commission that these violations were subsequent even to the adoption of the ordinance. So these aren't existing violations, these are new violations. These are things that have happened since 2016.
Okay, well, guess where I was going, is whether it's existing, there's something going on right there, in which there's some environmental violations. And if the guy looks at it and says, "I can't reapply, I'm done putting money in this, I'm just going to walk." And so this property can sit there until when, and until what? That would be my concern. Melanie?
Yeah, I think this is a great example of a project that really shouldn't go forward. You know, the preponderance of evidence really is that it should not, that we should agree with staff. I think they've done a good job. And, you know, this is a 58-acre property, so I really doubt that whoever owns it is going to simply walk on it. And so I think that even if we, you know, go with the staff recommendation here, there's a good chance that they may still have to pay whatever fines are owing just to maintain the actual acreage of the property. I highly doubt that after this evening, with some translation, that there would be any interest in paying fines, given that this can't be approved anyway. And so I really don't see where, why we wouldn't go with the staff recommendation on this one.
Mike?
And in looking at, you know, the Department of the Interior here, their report with the BLM land so close there, and it does say right there about the river's impact and it being one of those managed and conserved tributaries right over there, that it's best left where it's not being cultivated anyway. So I would have to say I would have to deny this right now.
Noah? And if I can just say too, I mean, I appreciate we're looking at this from both sides, but denial is not, is not the end of the story, because just like the previous case that we discussed, this land has value. But to be, in order to change hands, once we go through a certain legal process, which is cumbersome, and, you know, but the violation travels with this parcel, whether it's owned by the current one or a future one, it will have to be resolved, as I understand it, before this property could be permitted for anything, and without any permitting, it could never attain its potential value. So, I mean, I think it's a, giving it to code enforcement appears to be the appropriate next step for where we are.
Well, ready to put in a motion, someone?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make the motion, find the project exempt from the environmental review pursuant to state SEQA guideline section 15270. Make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code. The applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and adopt the resolution denying the proposed Tajmer Kaparov project. And I probably butchered that just like you did.
It sounded like mine.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Is everyone clear on the motion? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the commission, the Chairman Epstein's. With that, the motion passes, and we will move along to the first item on the agenda is public hearing, which is item number one, cannabis ordinances, personal use in dispensaries in the coastal zone. And so when the staff gets ready, we could, we'll be ready for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michael Richardson with the Planning Division. What this item is, it's a batch of two ordinance amendments. One is to the personal use outdoor cultivation ordinance in the coastal zone, and the second is to the dispensaries ordinance in the coastal zone. Both of those were approved by the county years ago. The Coastal Commission finally took action on them in August of this year. They have some suggested modifications, and we are recommending that your commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that those modifications be made to the ordinance so that we can get that certified by the Coastal Commission. The supplemental that I handed out is a revised attachment to, that's actually to the next item. I'm sorry, I'm a little premature in my supplementals. But in any case, the dispensaries and the personal use cultivation ordinance amendments are being recommended for approval, and I haven't had any correspondence or any communications that there's anyone in opposition to the modifications that are being suggested by the Coastal Commission, and so we are recommending you approve the resolution in attachment one. That's the end of my staff report.
Any questions for Michael on the staff report? Any editor confusions that need to be cleared up? Seeing no one, we will open this section of the public comment. Anyone wishing to publicly comment on this, please approach the podium and do so at this Seeing no one, we'll close this section of public comment, and we will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Noah?
Yeah, I have no concerns about this. I am just a little curious, looking at the markup version of this ordinance that shows all the initial sections that are being struck. Can you remind me of what date the original version of this ordinance dates back to that we are basically revising per Coastal Commission recommendations?
Yeah, the personal use ordinance, I believe that was done in 2014, and then the dispensary use was in 2015.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Lots changed since then. Yeah.
Any other comments, discussion?
Just one quick follow-up. I think we may have already discussed this with, well, no, but, yeah, you know, the staff report didn't really allude to any major differences between the county and the Coastal Commission's recommendations. It seemed like they were more just clarifying things, bringing them in line with perhaps some new entities and regulations. Was there anything else that you want to call out that you felt you had to really negotiate with them about and perhaps get them to back down, or you back down?
Yeah, in this, in this case, there wasn't much of a negotiation. The big change that the Coastal Commission wanted to make is that...
Attaching it to a residence, right?
Yeah, right. The inland side of the regulations allow for personal use cultivation to occur on vacant parcels. And the Coastal Commission, they really wanted it to be associated with an existing residence so that it could be, there was a logical connection to a personal use there at the site, and we didn't really negotiate that point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, discussions? Well, if we've exhausted the discussion, I guess we'll be ready for a motion.
Through the chair, there's, we're recommending two motions. One for the first personal use ordinance, and then after that has been voted on, a second motion to approve the dispensary ordinance.
Well, I'll make one motion at least. I will move to make all of the required findings based on evidence in the staff report and public testimony, and recommend the Board of Supervisors find the project is exempt from environmental review, and approve the cannabis personal use outdoor ordinance amendments in the coastal zone in attachment two by adopting the resolution in attachment one.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Is everyone clear on the motion? Looks like they are, so all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance, the first motion is approved.
Well, I'll move to make all of the required findings based on evidence in the staff report and public testimony, and recommend the Board of Supervisors find the project is exempt from environmental review and approve cannabis dispensaries ordinance amendments in the coastal zone in attachment four by adopting the resolution in attachment three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is everyone clear on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. And with that, we'll move along to the cannabis ordinance modification number two, which is the commercial cannabis land use ordinance, and we've got the supplemental on that, and I assume that is Michael's also.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Morris, members of the commission. This is a modification to the more recent commercial cannabis land use ordinance, and we're suggesting that your commission approve modifications to both the inland and the coastal versions. The original attachment to that I presented, which includes the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, had the exact same language for the section to be modified, and in discussion with Coastal Commission staff, they reminded me this morning that actually, the Coastal Commission suggested modifications, and the Board of Supervisors approved modifications to the first sentence in that paragraph, and so I'm forwarding to you as a supplemental the correct version of the coastal zoning ordinance that needs to be amended. And as with the previous set of ordinance changes, I have not received any communication or heard any, anybody is in opposition or has any questions about the proposed amendments. And just to bring out a little bit of background, the Board of Supervisors, before they took action on the commercial cannabis ordinance, joined a joint powers authority, the Cal Cannabis Authority, and one of the requirements in joining that group, and the idea with this group is to facilitate, facilitate the analysis of data associated with the cannabis industry, and to help jurisdictions in receiving or collecting taxes and liens and that sort of thing. And also, there's a banking component, too, where there's, this organization, the Cal Cannabis Authority, is interested in resolving some of the issues that are keeping funding from cannabis participants, cannabis activity participants, because of its Schedule I status at the federal level. And so this Cal Cannabis Authority is intended to help provide a mechanism for funding for investments and that sort of thing, as with any other industry. And so the Board joined this organization in, I believe it was January of 2018, and one of the requirements of all members is that the ordinances for cannabis within each of these jurisdictions include this language that's being proposed. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for, on staff?
Well, yeah, just a quick one. I'm a little bit unclear what the purpose of the supplemental is. How does it change what was in the staff report?
The only difference is that the ordinance, the underlying ordinance, is a little bit different from what was presented in the, in the staff report. There's, there was a sentence that was added in this supplemental.
In the coastal.
Yeah, in the coastal version.
Okay.
And that sentence is included in a supplemental, too, where it was left out of the original staff report.
And I think you stated that, but what was the sentence that was changed in the coastal again?
Let me grab a, I can grab a copy of the supplemental. Thank you.
Oh, and all other local coastal program policies and standards, probably.
That's right, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just, I was looking back and forth, I wasn't seeing anything different, but, okay, that's clear enough, yeah. Thanks.
Any other clarification?
No, I could make a motion.
No, we need to have public comment.
Oh.
Okay. With that, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to publicly comment on this, please approach the podium at this time.
Good evening. Thomas Mulder, CEO of Humboldt Redwood Healing. Just to let you know how important this matter means to me, I was supposed to be down at the Hall of Flowers today. I drove all the way down there, participated in the Hall of Flowers, and I drove all the way back here to speak to you tonight. This, in my opinion, first off, as a permit holder, I feel just the public notice of changing the land use ordinance without actually notifying via mail, email, that this ordinance to impose, I want to read the language, the added language is, and, whoops, sorry, coastal one. And any and all requirements imposed by the California Cannabis Authority on commercial cannabis operators or operations, including the payment of any levies, charges, or other exactions of any kind. So this is going to possibly add additional fees and costs to permit holders. So where is the notification to permit holders that this language is being discussed other than a public notice? I have a problem. I don't know much about CCA. I feel it's a public organization. I've participated in one conference call. I spoke under public comment. I know that, I don't know what date, I want to say May, maybe, I don't know. Sometime I participated in one. And there was people that were trying to drive decisions on that call, that were trying to say that they were excluded from Form 700. So I think anytime you're part of a governmental agency, you need, and you're making, driving decisions, everyone needs to disclose all their financial interests. I think that's something to be said. I think adding another regulatory reporting requirement is unneeded and unnecessary at this time. I feel it just overburdensome. I think if METRIC can't immediately upload this information to CCA, farmers shouldn't have to upload this information, is another thing. The other one is, what are the proposed costs? What is, what is this, what we're getting into? I'm very, very leery, and I hope you deny or postpone. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Evening, Commissioners. Tarek Harper, Executive Director, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. When the county moved forward with the joint powers authority, the county was also contracted with SIPCA, meaning that cannabis permit holders in Humboldt worked through SIPCA for their track and trace needs, and the idea was that it would dovetail into METRIC. That contract ceased to exist. That contract ceased to exist, and so now, at this point, without having a third party, operators are required to do somewhat double data entry, and that wasn't what was proposed to us in the beginning, and so while it may not cost extra money and a fee, it does cost extra time, which we are finding to be extremely valuable, especially right now. It just rained, we're primarily outdoor farmers, and so the idea of double data entry is just too much right now. METRIC is very, very new, most of our members in our alliance have only been engaging with it for less than a month, maybe a month and a half. There's a lot of kinks to, to work out, and time is very, very valuable to us. So appreciate SEQA, or, SEQA, wow, CSAC, it's been a long day, for their efforts on the banking issue, and looking forward to seeing if that rolls out and works, but that's also a to-be-determined piece of the puzzle. So just wanted to put those comments out there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Holly, I live in Breslin, Holly Carter, thank you. I have also been watching, trying to watch, the mission and goals of the CCA. I will say that it is very difficult to follow, they notice with, very short notice with their agendas, and they pass minutes once or twice a year, so you get to catch up with that. I'm reading right now, October through May's notes, so we're having a little hard time understanding what it is that they're doing. So to say that any and all requirements, including the cost of what those requirements might be, it makes me very nervous for operators that I work with. Will say that, I spoke with the, someone at the, she's a PSA officer, I'm not exactly sure what that means, but I talked with the woman at the credit union in Southern Humboldt about banking this morning, and she let me know that they actually cannot rely on external information, so this would not be a solution for that if that was one of the driving forces. Banks cannot, banks and credit unions cannot do compliance checks from other external avenues, and having the information that is being requested for weekly uploads, weekly, weekly uploads, even if nothing has changed, they're asking for this information to be sent to this organization for whatever use they're going to do with it, which primarily seems to be enforcement issues, which I have another set of concerns about, but doing that every single week, right now, we're, I'm working with sole proprietors, and some people with small teams, and in two months, we've spent 80 hours doing training with nine license holders, and doing training and data entry to get them uploaded. That, and that doesn't include the actual on-the-farm labor time, that includes like typing numbers and entering into the system. Then to have to duplicate that, and it's actually been said that it is not going to be something that downloads and uploads, it would, they're requesting duplicative information intentionally. I have concerns about the timeframe, and when I think about additional requirements that are just time, what it does, frankly, what it does is it encourages people to not do it. If this kind of language is included into our permits, when they have those state requirements already, there's reporting to other agencies and entities on different projects. If people aren't able to keep up, and then they're at risk of losing their permits, which oftentimes is linked to their homes, I have serious, serious concerns. I hope that you'll ask more questions at the minimum, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment? Please approach the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close this section of public comment, and we'll bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion. Director.
Thank you, Chair. If I could maybe offer some solutions after having heard some of the concerns that have been expressed, which I think are, are founded. Number one would be to look at alternative language for the ordinance itself. What we're really after is not to create the CCA as a regulatory authority, and so the wording here probably points too much in that direction. It's really to implement the agreement that the county signed with the CCA, which was to require provision of information. So rather than providing the addition there, perhaps we could just maintain compliance with all applicable state laws and county ordinances, period, and then go down and create a new number eight, and simply require that the applicant work with the county to provide the, provide the information required by its participation in the CCA. So that it's clearly just a matter of providing information. Now, that doesn't address the issue of the problem that, as was stated originally, the understanding was, is that either SIPCA or that METRIC could backfeed this information, and so it wouldn't impose a duplicative requirement upon cultivators. That has not been resolved right now. So one of the things that the Commission may want to consider doing, if, if you would make a recommendation to the Board, is to include in the resolution that the Planning Commission recommends that the Board not implement this until the procedural aspects of providing that information have been resolved in such a way that it does not pose a hardship on Humboldt County cultivators.
Okay. Melanie?
Thank you for, for the comments and for the, the staff update. It was my understanding that this language was in here simply because we are required as an agency that issues permits to provide this information to the CCA, and so I, I, yeah, I didn't really see that we had other options, but I do prefer the, the language that you just suggest, suggested.
Well, but to provide the information through the chair, forgive me, that is absolutely correct, that is the point, and, and I, I, if I'm going to look at it through any of the speakers' eyes, through Mr. Mulder, Ms. Carter, or Ms. Carver, you know, to read including the payment of levies, charges, or other exactions of any kind.
Which are not specified and could change at any time.
Yeah, no, that, that's, I, I.
Yeah.
I see.
They're quite persuasive on this point.
The any kind.
But maybe what Commissioner McCaver was getting at is that, while I entirely agree with what she said, and prefer your proposed language, the staff report said, and I'm not saying that Humboldt County shouldn't push back on this, but it does say pretty clearly that one of the requirements of all CCA members is that their ordinances include and then a direct quote. So, I, I mean, is the implication of this suggestion, or of our recommending different language, that Humboldt County would have to then kind of go back to CCA and say, well, we're actually not comfortable with that specific language in our ordinances or in our permits?
Forgive me, I'm going to have to defer. Michael, I don't recall, is that a direct quote, that we're required to include that in our ordinance, or to amend our ordinance to require that members provide the information that's requested?
This, this quote was presented by our former county council as a requirement for joining the organization. The, the memorandum of understanding that is approved by the Board of Supervisors is, that is an agreement to conform to the requirements of the CCA, and this is one of those, is my understanding. I think the, the points that have been raised by the speakers and the, the questions being raised by your commissions, by your commission are, are good, and I think the, the Board of Supervisors should be asked to, to struggle a little bit with the amended language, and possibly with this memorandum of, of understanding, and, and working with this organization in a way that is facilitating rather than hindering our, our local applicants. And, and I think by default, the, the language that has been presented to your commission will be considered by the Board when they take action on this, as will any additional alternatives that your, your commission sees fit. And so I don't, I don't see any problems with you taking an action that, that you feel comfortable with, because it's all going to go forward to the Board of Supervisors for, for their deliberation.
Go ahead.
So, one of the speakers indicated that they're, they're being providing, they're providing data that's duplicative, and can you explain with that, why would we require them to do something twice?
That's a great question, and I was not aware that, I'm kind of out of the loop when it comes to complying with the CCA's requirements, and so this is new information to me.
Maybe I could ask one of the speakers who has an answer to that to come up to the podium and give us an answer?
Terrence Carver, Executive Director, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. I am not a tech person, this is going to be my best attempt. The state has METRIC, which is the track and trace program, that is mandated for all cannabis businesses. At the time that the county engaged with CCA, we also had SIPCA, but METRIC was not up and running. SIPCA also, well, SIPCA was, was also a track and trace program that then would dovetail into METRIC, and the data would transfer. The idea was that CCA would essentially be a rider to SIPCA, meaning that applicants would never have to do any double, double entry, because it would, the, the data would flow. Now that we don't have SIPCA, we have CCA and METRIC, and we have to do double data entry, because they're not talking as well as they should as well.
Thank you. Director?
Thank you, and Ms. Carver captured that, that portion of it correctly. Part of the other struggle is that in order to do what CCA is intending to do, was the information that is being requested was initially thought to be beneficial, and Ms. Carter pointed out that the banks aren't as excited about having this information right now, and the information is twofold. One is to try to create certainty for lending institutions, two is to create a more level playing field across the entire state for enforcement. And by having that information on the entire state, it's already being found in the counties that are participating, that they can better track where product is going, where it's being sold, and whether or not it's being diverted rather than staying within the permitted market. So it's twofold, it's lending institutions, it is enforcement. Enforcement is not as important in Humboldt County because of the efforts here, but it does provide us with a better opportunity to compete on a statewide level with enforcement being done on a statewide basis. That being said, one of the assumptions is, and this is the hard part for Humboldt County, is that the information that's being put into METRIC is basically the same information that's needed for this cause. And, and this is urban bias, if you will, is that the idea is that there are third-party vendors that have the ability to have computer software that automatically, as the information's put into METRIC, diverts it to CCA, and so there is not a duplicative process. The struggle is, the third-party vendors have to have that software and be able to do that. I'm not aware, I hear that there are two, but I am not aware personally of any third-party vendors in Humboldt County that are capable of doing that. And, and so that is part of the struggle right now, and that is why staff would offer the Commission with the language in the resolution to recommend that the Board not implement this until that, those provisions are worked out. That will, by the agreement that the county has with CCA, result in the county paying a fine, a $5,000 fine for not implementing this. But it, it probably is better for the county to pay that fine, and make the technology, make the process catch up to a point where it's not overly burdening our cultivators, so that that can be refined, perfected, and then move forward in an appropriate manner.
Thank you, Director. Noah?
Could I just ask, yeah, that was, that was very clarifying, and thank you to the speakers. I, I just wanted to ask the Director, I'll, I'll give him a moment, though. This has certainly clarified the issue a great deal for me, and I, I think we would all be more comfortable with the revised eighth subheading under the performance standards that we were, that we're going to recommend. Can you state how you had crafted that point eight in addition to the, since you seem to say it pretty concisely? If you wrote it down.
I, I did not write it down, but I'll go another shot.
Give it another shot.
Yeah, tell me how close I got. Require the applicant work with, or.
To provide information.
To, you know, work with the applicant to provide information required by CCA.
Well, we're, these are, these are performance standards on the, on the applicants themselves.
Correct, so, so the applicant will provide information necessary to comply with the county's participation within the CCA?
Yes. That seems about right, and that makes sense. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to.
Mike it.
Yeah, sorry.
So what about the part, because, you know, as a business guy, re-entering stuff several times for the same stuff is, is very cumbersome and time-consuming. Where is that then in this?
So if, if.
Because I, I would not like to see that, I would like to see it delayed.
So if we could go to page five of the staff report, this is, would be page two of the resolution, there are currently one, two, six different recommendations to the Board. Add a number seven recommendation that this, the provisions of this ordinance would not be implemented until the CCA and METRIC or other solution is developed to not adversely affect Humboldt County's cultivator's ability to participate or to provide the information.
To report to the CCA.
Yes.
What I was thinking is something, that they not be required to provide data that is duplicative of data already being provided until such time as technology allows whatever you just said. Something to that effect, I mean, not that you're saying you're not going to do it, it's that you will do it at the time and place that they don't have to do it twice. I mean, because they are providing the data, I would assume.
Well, they're, they're providing the, the data to the METRIC system, and the, the problem, as was pointed out by all three speakers, is the METRIC system isn't talking back in such a way that it's giving that information to METRIC, so it's all duplicative.
Who owns the, I don't know anything about METRIC, but system, who owns the METRIC system?
The state of California.
So, and CCA is not a state organization?
No, it's, it's an association of, of counties who are coming together to try to put information together and a framework together that would encourage lending institutions to be able to better work with cannabis businesses.
So I can see where reporting into METRIC is vital, because that's the state of California, be compliant for track and trace, but to delay any of the other requirement then to the CCA, because double entry is just bad for the same information.
Noah?
I think we're all on the same page, and none of us wants to, you know, pass something or recommend new performance standards that could impose that, that risk of double entry, and just the confusion that seems to surround this. I, I'm curious to ask the staff, what is the downside of continuing this item a month or two? Let's get through the harvest season for one thing, but also just a little bit more time to, to research and understand what potential technical options exist. Can you explain the downside, since, since this feels a little bit half-baked to me, to be honest?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I'll try to tackle it. So, part, part of the struggle is, is that the, the struggle at the, between the state and the CCA is evolving, and. and the CCA is evolving and, not to be negative, but de-evolving and evolving again. And, and it's very much just in process. And METRIC is not working like it was supposed to work. And in all honesty, as was pointed out, originally the county entered into a contract with SIPCA. We were under the understanding that SIPCA would then translate directly into both METRIC and CCA, and so that would really function as a nice third-party provider. It would give the county the ability to do its own Track and Trace. But in the final analysis, what was determined is that what we were doing is we were requiring our local cultivators to pay somebody to do Track and Trace when nobody else in the state was having to do that. So that was an, an income off the top. There was a cost that was taking away from the income for our local cultivators, giving them a competitive disadvantage. And, and so the decision was made to stop SIPCA and to see that METRIC would become the primary Track and Trace that, since it was being done at the state level. So one of the things, and this is maybe an urban bias, is that the, the METRIC system is being largely input in other areas by third-party providers who have the software to interface directly with METRIC. That same software then can interface directly with CCA, and so that works. Some of the struggle that we have here is that we don't have the, those same resources available to our, our local cultivators, and this is particularly true for our smaller cultivators. And we do not want to put them at a competitive, this, an additional competitive disadvantage. And, and so while the whole thing is in flux, there is an agreement that the county entered into. It was one of the first signers to enter into this kind of agreement, to enter into the CCA, and to modify ordinance to require this information and, and to, to comply with that. And so in all honesty, we're a little bit behind in our responsibility of modifying the ordinance to require the provision of that information. So we do want to show good faith in, in coming into compliance from that perspective. But I think it's appropriate for the Planning Commission to express justifiable concern that we really don't want to start putting the cultivators in a place of having to jump through additional hoops until the process is worked out. We're, we're in agreement that this is, providing the information is a good thing, and, and doing this in the ordinance is a good thing, or maybe it's not. I don't want to put words in the Planning Commission's mouth. But the, the, the net result is really there are two considerations here that I would propose to you. One is the nature of the language to be put into the ordinance. Then when does this get implemented?
I, I appreciate that explanation, but if I may, I just, I'm, I'm still, since, as I understand it, you're suggesting that we might tweak this revised language slightly, but, but include something that, that gets at the issue of communicating necessary information to CCA. But at the same time, in the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, recommend that they not implement that requirement yet. And so I guess what I'm really trying to get at is, is there some downside to just continuing this a month or two? I mean, I, not to put words in your mouth, but is it perhaps feeling like if we just get done with it and, and at least we have language that we think would be okay finally in the ordinance, then at least we're done with, then at least we're done with it here, and it can be handled from henceforth by the supervisors to see, to determine when this should be implemented, what sufficient, what technical solution is necessary to make that call? I mean...
So let me offer this thought. The board obligated the county to require this information and to provide the information. That's already done.
Yeah.
All we're doing is fulfilling the, that, that agreement provision to include that requirement in the ordinance. So you could wait, and, but I would ask you to consider what is it that you're waiting for? Because really what we're trying to do is require the information that we're obligated to provide. So that's a pretty perfunctory thing. The, the second component of this is that while we recognize the desirability of engaging in this and providing the information, and how good that would be to improve banking and to improve enforcement on a statewide basis relative to the cannabis industry, we don't think that this is really ready to be operational yet, and we're concerned about throwing our cultivators into this fray. And so on the one hand, you could wait to make that statement, or on the other hand, you could make the statement, adopt the resolution, and say that directly to the board now. And, and so they then could grapple with the fact that, you know, CCA, part of our agreement was that these things would be done, and it seems to be changing a little bit, and this is not working like we thought it would. And so then you put that decision point into the hands of the supervisors, who then can start to have that discussion with CCA.
Okay. I think that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Melanie?
Yeah, thank you. This has been very edifying. I do think that it is still relatively simple in the sense that I think it's important, although, you know, I and many other people know that the state has been probably absurd, you would say absurdly demanding in terms of what people need to do to, to grow or become certified. Nonetheless, I think it's important to meet all of the requirements of the state. As regards to the CCA, it seems to me that we should be making some sort of recommendation to the supervisors that they work with the other counties to amend this text. I mean, this is not our job here. And we're, we play a, a big role in the CCA. I mean, Supervisor Fennell is one of the Board of Directors. There are several rural counties. Mendocino, Board of Directors. Yolo, I believe, also Board of Directors. Why are we not recommending to the, the supervisors that they work with the other counties to amend the language, or maybe perhaps even better, planning? So I'm wondering if maybe we can either send it forward to the supervisors with a recommendation that they work with the amended language that doesn't say, you know, any other exactions of any kind, which is, does sound a little bit dramatic. But I'm wondering if we could either send it to the supervisors with that recommendation, given that we do have a lot of power here. I mean, we're creating, in a sense, the CCA. Or send it back to staff to maybe work with the other planning departments of those rural counties to address not only the language here, but also the social justice issues of the rural counties versus the non-rural counties. I mean, there, there probably, maybe there's two people in this county that would be able to afford the technology, the software necessary to do this. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous to have such a presence of, you know, in terms of our rural population in the state on the CCA and the Board of Directors and end up in this situation. And so I, I would like to see either us recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they work with the other supervisors on the Board of Directors at, at the CCA to look at these issues, or send it back to staff to work with the other planning departments towards the same end. And I'd, I'd really love to hear the opinion of, of staff, since we have several of you here, a few left here.
Director?
Yeah, no, I think that you have captured that well, that this, this is something that the, the, the board has the power to, to deal with. We have talked to other counties. The way that they have implemented it and implemented their ordinances are not all the same. So it, it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison.
Mike?
So I had a question in the resolution, in the, the fourth whereas, which is where it has one of the requirements of the CCA members. It starts off like that. Did we come to a resolution about part of that statement that's in the quote, that that whole thing has to be in there? After, especially after commercial cannabis operators or operations, the rest of that, including payment of any levies charges?
Yes, unfortunately, that language is a direct quote out of the agreement. And one of the things that I would offer, unless County Council's office hits me on the back of the head, is, is that part of the Planning Commission's recommendation could be that you don't feel comfortable with that language being that, whatever adjective you want to use for that.
Like social injustice.
Yeah, because I, I'm not in agreement with that, that whole statement there. I don't know how they can do that. So, all right, thank you.
I would, I would like to add my two bits, and what I see is, is that, you know, if we have a recognized problem of, of a duplicative burden, which is placing our growers at a disadvantage, I mean, this is the time and the place to address it. And I think, you know, the sooner we get it addressed, if it, if it's something that we can recommend that the supervisors address, since they are, I guess, are the ones who, who have the input into the CCA, that's what we need to do, is make a recommendation that, that how we see it. And if, if that means that, I guess if it costs the county, you know, a $5,000 fine until they get their negotiations through with, I, I'd say so be it. But certainly, I think, I hear what the growers are saying, and not only on this issue, but I've heard from growers on other issues. And, you know, this is not an economic slam dunk for a lot of these growers. I mean, they have got to watch their costs, they've got to watch their actions, and I think that, you know, if, if we're going to continue to try and make our ordinance workable and in the public interest, we need to listen to them, since they are a, a big source of, of funds for the county. Any other comments?
So it sounds maybe like we'd be making a recommendation to ask the supervisors to work with the other Board of Directors or, and/or the other supervisors of the rural counties to look into the social justice issues and the, some of the text?
I, I think it would, it would be, it would be more not to implement this, if I understood, going back to what the directors' initial suggested language was, is not to implement this until we can be assured that we're not placing an economic disadvantage to cultivators in our county versus other counties. Is that kind of a gist of, of your initial?
Yes, that's, that's a good encapsulation of it. If I, I could, I think it's twofold. If I, if I am sensing where the commission is at, is number one, is the commission doesn't feel comfortable with the language, particularly the payment of any levies, charges, or other exactions of any kind, that really the commission would recommend that the ordinance be amended to require submission of information as appropriate to comply with the county's participation in the CCA. But that, that not, the second part of it is that that not be implemented and mandated until such a time as it can be effectively done without imposing undue burden on the cultivators within Humboldt County.
That's how I would see it.
Do we need to specify in there, Director, that just the, at this point, getting the information into the state of California?
Well, that's already a requirement of the...
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have to address that.
We don't.
The one thing that you, you may, you know, could consider is, is that the, the Planning Commission, if you were inclined to address the social equity issue of rural versus urban environments, and expressed that this seems to be oriented towards a more urban environment, and that the, the board should advocate for the, the rural small cultivators, and, and advocate that the CCA be more sensitive to their role and importance in the statewide market. I mean, that's something that you could include within your recommendation to the board.
Well, I, I would hope that, that whatever directors are on the CCA that come from rural counties, I would hope that they would be looking for a level playing field to begin with. That shouldn't, should have been one of their, their major mandates and perspectives, I would have thought. You know, we can reiterate that, that's fine with me.
I, you know, I, I do think we're all on the same page. I, I guess I find myself, you know, uncomfortable though voting for this when what we're, what we're changing it to is something really different than what came to us, and with a, a lot of loose ends. I mean, I, I'm, I'm at least putting out for discussion that, given the concerns that I don't sense disagreement among us, or disagreement with the public that has spoken, one course of action could be to not vote to recommend, or to recommend against adopting this change to our ordinance at this time, because, you know, while that may be in the MOU with CCA, the, the impacts of it would disproportionately harm our cultivators. You know? I mean, ultimately, it's just a recommendation, the supes can, can overturn it. But, but I think in some ways, that most clearly underscores the concerns that we're talking about. You know, otherwise, we're, we're recommending to include language, but not the language that's supposedly required, and even that language we're recommending not go into effect at this time. It, it feels a little bit like, that, that sounds like no. So that's a little bit how I'm feeling.
Well, if, if, if we give a recommended language to the supervisors, I think that gives them kind of a running start on the commission's perspective and the testimony that we've heard from the, the public. And I, you know, the, I think a, a lot of the, the supervisors, you know, they may not have time to delve deeply into this. And so if, if we can give them a running start, I, I'd like to, you know, be able to do that.
Okay.
I think the director's recommended language is, is one that does give them a kind of running, running start. If they don't like it, they can do something different. But at least they know where we're coming from and what we heard from the public tonight.
I, I can certainly go that way. I, I, I just, yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to move the process along, but to be, yeah, I, you know, I'm fine with that.
I, I think that, yeah, I think that we do all more or less agree on the, the main issues, just getting to the end. And I, I would like to see us send it on to the supervisors, but perhaps we can have something in there that says we would like staff to include, you know, the discussion items that we've gone over here in terms of the language and some of the inequality issues between wealthy and poor, which, you know, often translates into rural and urban, but not always, it's more like small versus large businesses.
Maybe I could ask the director to reiterate his suggested, suggested, so that we get a little, little kind of clarification back on it.
You have it written?
Michael has it.
I do. The, the ordinance language is to modify number... The, um, the ordinance language is to modify, um, number eight.
That, that's the, yeah, number eight, right. I'm sorry, we're all looking at the screen, but that's the resolution.
Yeah, no, the, the...
You're talking about the performance standards, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The performance standards, number eight, is to be revised to require the applicants provide information, um, consistent with the requirements of the CCA. And to add number seven to the resolution, which says that we recommend the board not implement, uh, these new requirements until provisions are, are worked out to, uh, not unnecessarily burden our local cultivators with duplicative data entry. And then the third thing is to add a number eight to the whereas, or the, to the recommendations that would say the, the planning commission is uncomfortable with, uh, language in the agreement with the CCA, and we recommend the board, um, modify that language that talks about any and all, uh, exactions, and, and have the agreement be a information-sharing agreement rather than point to economic, uh, burdens that there are, uh, that are unknown.
I would just not use the word uncomfortable. Um, I'm more than uncomfortable, so I, I would, that kind of sounds like, yeah, I don't really, you know, I would say we...
Don't want to see.
We don't want to...
Not in agreement.
We're opposed to...
Opposed?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, thank you.
I would go with that.
Yeah, I think...
As a motion.
Mr. Richardson's language was pretty much, got it.
I'd put opposed in there, as opposed to uncomfortable.
Got it.
Well, is someone ready to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I think a commissioner has to make the motion, not Michael.
I didn't write it down.
I'll make the motion that, well, I'm relying on, on staff's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to some of the language that staff has recorded. I move that we make all the required findings based on evidence in the staff reports and public testimony, and recommend, uh, that to find this project is exempt, uh, from environmental review, and approve the commercial cannabis ordinance amendments by adopting the attached resolution, comma, uh, including the, um, amendments that were made to the performance standards and, uh, the whereas, or, and the resolution. I mean, given that the staff is, has it written down, is that sufficiently specific?
And I think that's, that's kind of vague and ambiguous for someone who may be watching this, so I, I think perhaps it...
So if I could help a little bit?
If you could write those down, and, and we'll get them...
So it, it, the recommendation would be to adopt the resolution with the six recommendations to the board of supervisors, and to add two recommendations. Recommendation number seven, which is what Mr. Richardson read, and recommendation number eight, that the planning commission is opposed to the language that exists in the existing, um, MOU. And then adopt the ordinance.
Right, well, and, and furthermore, with the change that we made to the performance standards whereby the proposed provide text is stricken, and a new bullet point eight added that states that an additional, um, performance standard is that applicants will provide information necessary to comply with the county's participation in the California Cannabis Authority. Hopefully, it's all there.
I, yeah, I mean, I, I just had us writing down that we would, you know, put through one through six, where we, um, changed one to remove the text that we're opposed to, and then added seven, that the amendments not be approved until such time that, uh, any changes are not going to be burdensome to our local constituents. And then we also added a number eight that requires the applicants to provide information to the CCA.
Those are two different sections, though. One is the performance standards, and one is the resolution to the board. So I think we just need to be clear, we've, we've, we've proposed edits to two parts of this. One is the ordinance itself, the other is the document of transmittal to the supervisors. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
And I think, again, we need to get this clear. I think if someone watching this on a video out there is probably about ready to fall asleep.
Yeah.
So we need to have this clear and concise, so that we know what we're voting on, and the public knows what we're voting on.
So if I could walk through is what I understand the motion to be?
Right ahead.
The motion would be to find that the, uh, uh, modifications of the ordinance is consistent with the, uh, EIR adopted for the CCLUO, and that, uh, the planning commission adopts the resolution, uh, making all the required findings, and including the recommendations to the board of supervisors, which currently includes one through six, and is modified to include, uh, recommendation number seven, which is that the modification to the ordinance not be implemented until such a time as it can be done without creating undue hardship on existing Humboldt County cultivators. And number eight, that the planning commission is opposed to implementation of the language that is found in the MOU, which reads, "Any and all requirements imposed by the California Cannabis Authority on Commercial Cannabis Operators or Operations, Including the Payment of Any Levies, Charges, or Other Extractions of Any Kind." Then the planning commission is also recommending approval that the board of supervisors adopt the ordinance as proposed, uh, for both the coastal and the inland portions, with the following changes. The text that was added in 55 dot four, dot one-two, dot one, dot one, that's shown in underline and yellow, is stricken, and a new provision, 55 dot four, dot one-two, dot one, dot eight, is added, that...
Provide information necessary to comply with the county's participation in the California Cannabis Authority.
Thank you, I couldn't have said it better myself.
And I was just gonna say, that's exactly what I meant to say, Director Ford, thank you. Great job.
Then perhaps you can put it in motion.
Just, could we, yeah, could we add in there, when we put, um, that we're opposed to the language in the MOU, that we would like to see the supervisors work with the board of directors or other supervisors of other counties to address the social justice issues inherent in this process?
Sure. I mean, yes, and that was part of our discussion, and, and I think that's consistent with recommendation eight to the supervisors, that we're specifically, um, opposed to this language requiring payment of an exactions and levies and fees, and furthermore, uh, recommend that the board of supervisors work with other counties and the governing body of the CCA to resolve certain, um, well... Social, uh, social justice or inequalities between counties that this may raise. Does that seem good?
Yeah, or large and small.
Okay, um, the, the inequalities and, so let's just say, we urge them to work with other counties and the governing body of the CCA to resolve certain inequalities or injustices between large and small operators, comma, rural and urban counties, et cetera. Does that capture it?
Yeah.
Good, thanks. So that is my motion.
Clear and concise, do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion to second, any discussion on the motion, is everyone clear on the motion? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is passed, and we have one item left on our agenda, but we will take a ten-minute break, and then when we come back, what we have on the agenda is the, uh, a discussion on the amendment to the Humboldt County zoning maps. So we'll start that in ten minutes, and we'll be back. All right, let's, uh, call halt to our break, and we will get back on to agenda item number three into the public hearing, which is amendment to Humboldt County zoning maps, trying to make them consistent with the 2017 Humboldt County general plan. And with that, we'll take a staff report, and I, I would add that this is not an action item tonight, it's more of a discussion item, and, uh, we will have an action on it at a later meeting.
Chair, if I could, John Ford, the Planning and Building Department, want to just indicate that this really is an introduction tonight. One of the things that we have committed to do, based upon a conversation with the board of supervisors, is to send out notices to all the affected property owners. And so we have not done that yet, so we are not ready to have the actual public hearing. Uh, we are working on doing that, um, there, I, I can't remember, and if, any number I give will be wrong, but it's, it's a lot. It's a pretty staggering number of parcels that need to be noticed. And, uh, but we, we have committed to doing that, we will get that done, and when we come back for a public hearing with the planning commission, it will be with all the property owners having been noticed. So tonight is really an introduction. With that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Miller.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's John Miller with, uh, Long Range Planning in the Planning Department. We're here to talk about, or give an introduction to the zoning map amendments to implement the general plan. As I think you've all seen before, we, we have a project webpage that we use to house all the information for, for the public, and we're trying to make it as easy for them to get access to the changes in the, to the zoning text and to the zoning maps using our web GIS. So the purpose of this project, it's a big project, is to ensure consistency of the zoning regulations and the zoning map with the general plan adopted in 2017. This is the highest priority of the general, general plan implementation projects, and we, we are carrying it out generally in two steps. The first step relates to the zoning code, it's adding new principle and combining zones to the zoning regulations, and amending existing principle and combining zone, uh, combining zones to be consistent with the general plan. And step two relates to the zoning map, and that's applying these zones and amended zones, other consistent zones to the zoning maps, as described in the general plan. And as your commission is aware, this is a big project. Consequently, the board has, uh, divided the project into four steps, and tasked staff to carry out each of these steps, um, in concert with, uh, public engagement. The work, work plan that was approved by the board in January, um, it has, identifies four steps, and each step involves extensive public out, output, outreach, and stakeholder outreach. The steps, steps are, um, step one, amendments to the zoning regulations, step two, reviewing the text and maps with, uh, the, with cities regarding their spheres of influence, step three, which is what we're introducing tonight, is amendments to the zoning map, and step four is community planning within specifically identified areas of the county. This slide shows the meetings that we've had to date with both the planning commission and the board of supervisors in the community, and with, um, with, with certain stakeholders. There are more meetings that are, than are, that we've, than we've included on this list. So it's, we've, we've had a lot of meetings. The, uh, we're here to talk about step three, amendments to the zoning map. And with, in this step, we're going to apply new and modified existing zones, consistent with the general plan and land use map, to the, to the zoning map. Not included in this process are changes to the Blue Lake, Field Brook, Glendale, and Willow Creek community planning areas, and the McKinleyville Town Center, as well as areas within McKi- McKinleyville that are proposed to be rezoned to mixed use, and specific areas along Murray Road that are, uh, proposed to be rezoned to heavy commercial consistent with the general plan. All of these areas will be, uh, brought to the community, and we'll work with the community before we bring those, changes in those areas to the planning commission. Uh, also excluded from this step is portions of the Titlow Hill area, which are the subject of a general plan amendment and, um, zoning, specific zoning reclassifications. So the new zones that your commission's, uh, previously saw were approved by the board of supervisors, and they include the mixed-use zones, a new public resource and recreation zone, tribal land zone, timberland exclusive, mineral resource, public resource, uh, planned rural development combining zone, and a railroad combining zone. Certain of these have not yet taken effect, they will be, uh, they'll be effective on the 26th of this month, and that's the mixed-use zones, the timberland exclusive zone, and the planned rural development combining zone. The, uh, zoning map recommendations that, that will be before your commission for recommendation of the board of supervisors include the application of the mixed-use urban zone to be applied to areas that are planned mixed-use on the land use map, the mixed, mixed-use rural zone to be applied to areas, planned village center and rural communit- community center on the map. And, uh, based on recommendations of your planning commission, there's additional guidance in these zones that they should, the application of the zones should include a Q or D combining zone to address local concerns, and your, your commission, uh, discussed parking requirements with, with these zones, and the board added provisions for parking reductions when they, when they adopted these zones. We're also going to be recommending the application of the PR, Public Resource and Recreation Principal Zone to lands that are planned public. These are largely the national forest, national park, state park, and, uh, county park lands. The, um, uh, we will be recommending the application of the tribal land zone, and this zone would be applied to land planned tribal lands, or land planned tribal trust lands that are not timber production zone. The timberland exclusive zone, when, after the, the 26th of this month, will be available to be applied to lands planned timber production, but are not zoned TPZ. When the board approved the TE zone, they, um, identified specific criteria, gave direction to the, the planning department on how to apply this, and rec, uh, specified that it be applied to lands that are zoned unclassified and greater than 160, 160 acres in area. that are zoned unclassified and graded in 160 acres an area. Upon further review, we haven't identified any parcels that meet that criteria, therefore we're not recommending the application of the TE zone on the zoning maps. It's available to property owners who evaluate this zone in comparison to others that are recommended and feel that they would like to have that zone rather than the other. There's new combining zones that we're recommending be applied. We're recommending that the Mineral Resource Combining Zone be applied to parcels with permitted surface mining operations. We're using an updated SMARA, Surface Mining and Reclamation Act layer to apply these to specific parcels. We heard feedback when we were bringing the mapping to the communities that some of the areas that were recommended for the MR weren't accurate. We've done further review. The Planned Resource Development Combining Zone is available to be applied. We're not applying it to the map at this time. In fact, we likely won't be initiating the application of this zone without the property owner coming forward and saying, "We want to utilize these regulations." We're recommending that the Railroad Rides of Way Protection Combining Zone apply to land railroad on the land use map. There is a line on the land use map that represents the North Coast Railroad Authority's right of way and the Annie and Mary rail line between Arcata and Blue Lake and a spur that comes off of the NCRRA right of way and goes to Carlotta. So that's where we're recommending that combining zone. The modified zones, the board approved modifications to the agricultural exclusive zone and the timber production zone. The amendments reflect compatible uses for those zones that are specified in the general The modifications include provisions in both zones for primary and secondary residential units and a new minimum parcel size for the agricultural exclusive zone that's specified in the general plan, 60 acres. And other open space related considerations, in particular in the AE zone, mitigations for the conversion of agricultural land and limitations or required findings for the conversion of prime farmlands. There's also, I don't have a slide for it, but there's modifications to the F flood hazard area combining zone to add requirements to obtain a special permit for the development of a residential unit on a substandard lot located wholly within the flood zone. That's per conservation and open space requirements. We are recommending on the zoning maps to apply the AE zone to lands that are planned agricultural exclusive, agriculture grazing or timberland that are currently zoned U or where the current zone is incompatible. There's instances where the land is currently zoned agricultural exclusive and it's planned for residential use, either residential estates or residential agriculture. And in, let's see, so we're recommending to correct these incompatibilities. We're not recommending the application of the timber production zone, so it's not, there's no additional applications of this zone. So rezones into and out of TPZ would occur as part of a separate process following the text and map amendments and these would be in concert with landowners. We're recommending the application of the AP Airport Safety Review Combining Zone and this is recommended to be applied to areas that are shown on the land use maps, the approved land use maps with an AP Airport Land Use Compatibility Zone overlay. We're recommending the application of the F flood hazard areas combining zone to areas within, that are mapped as A or AE, which is the 100-year flood plain. And we are recommending the use of the B5 or changes to the B5 building, special building site combining zone to apply to areas or to modify areas that are your B5 where the principal zone is consistent but the minimum parcel size is smaller or maybe larger than what's specified on the general plan land use map. And we're recommending that the WR Streamside Management Areas and Wetlands Combining Zone be applied to the parcel information and not the zoning map where a parcel is overlapped with Streamside Management Area and wetland buffers. And this table represents the, so there's about 625,000 acres within the county that are currently zoned unclassified. Almost all of it is public lands, parts of national and state parks. And another large chunk is tribal lands within the Hoopon-Yorrock reservations. So that leaves out about 95,000 acres of land that are currently zoned unclassified where we are recommending zones consistent with the general plan land use designations. And most of that is lands that are rural residential lands, so residential agriculture. And we would be recommending Agriculture General Zone. A lot of it is planned agriculture general and agricultural exclusive. In that instance, we'd be recommending the agricultural exclusive zone, the most, almost the only appropriate zone. Others is within community planning areas and zoned unclassified such as the Orleans Community Planning Area. And there we'd be recommending the Rural Residential Agriculture Zone, the RA Zone. And you can see the other examples of zones that we're recommending to areas that are zoned unclassified currently. This is, and the colors over the gray topo background to the county represent the zones that are, the areas where zone changes are recommended. And the color palette there doesn't resemble what was on my computer screen. The purple and exemplified by the square is the tribal land zone. What was a bluish color is, represents Six Rivers National Forest and Redwood National Park, that's the Public Resource and Recreation Zone. You can see smatterings of it in Redwood Creek Watershed, which is BLM Holdings. And you'll see what appear to be random dark green areas and some lighter green areas. And the dark green areas, dark green squares are likely TPZ holdings that are also permitted mineral extraction sites. And so there, we're not recommending a change to the principal zone, we're recommending the application of the MR combining zone. You'll see dashed blue outlines, those are community planning areas. And you see down in the, in this area, this is the McKinleyville Community Planning Area. This is the Fieldbrook-Glendale Community Planning Area. And you only see a few recommended changes within McKinleyville and none within Fieldbrook-Glendale, none within Willow Creek, none within Blue Lake. But in the surrounding areas, you see some, these are permitted mineral extraction sites that we're recommending the application of the MR combining zone. This is the Titlow Hill area and there is considerable amount of unclassified lands in those areas that aren't a part of the parcels that are carrying through with the general plan amendment and zone reclassifications. And there we're recommending, for the most part, agricultural exclusive. This is land that's planned agriculture grazing or agricultural exclusive. This is the northern portion of the county. Center portion of the county, similar circumstance, Six Rivers National Forest on the east side of the county. And changes that reflect changes in the general plan within the Eureka Community Plan or changes to combining zones. This big change is, that's the Neyland Airport. That's the application of the AP combining zone. And you see a similar instance over here in Dinsmore. This is the Dinsmore Airport. There's also unclassified areas that are, where precise zones are being recommended. There are unclassified lands on the south side of the Eel River bottoms that, where the agricultural exclusive zone is being recommended, as well as some permitted mineral Going to Southern Humboldt, Kings Range and Humboldt-Redwood State Park are where we're recommending the application of the Public Resource and Recreation Zone. And then smattering of unclassified lands where we're recommending zones consistent with the underlying land use designation, which for the most part are agriculture general. Some mineral resource areas where we're recommending the MR combining zone. This is the Garberville Airport. So a common change within that area is the AP combining zone. And then there are changes to the mineral, minimum lot size to be consistent with the airport compatibility zones. And that's the 50,000-foot level tour of the county. And there's some example areas. This is Oric. And, let me get to my notes. So the change areas are a little washed out, especially over the aerial. But this, you see Humboldt, Redwood National and State Parks is the dominant color in this area. Up here to the north, there's an area that's zoned heavy industrial and agriculture general that was planned for, I think it was agricultural lands originally and heavy industrial. This is now the Redwood Lodge, Redwood Lodge Properties. It's planned commercial recreation and proposed to be zoned highway services commercial, which is our go-to zone for areas that might be motels along highways. Other changes are, there's a couple changes just south of there where we're changing the minimum lot size to be consistent with the general plan update. Here are changes from agricultural exclusive to agriculture general with the minimum lot size set at the general plan density. On the north side, this is planned residential agriculture with a 40 to 60 density range. We're recommending 40-acre lot size, which is consistent with the lots that are in that area. To the south of it is planned residential agriculture 5 to 20 and we're recommending 20-acre lot size. These are larger lots. This is going from agricultural exclusive zone, which is not consistent with the residential land use designation, to agriculture general. And here is, this is the Hufford Bar and we're recommending the application of the mineral, the mineral resources combining zone. The next is, the blue outline is the Orleans Community Planning Area and some parcels that are zoned unclassified to the north along Ishupishi Road. There are some areas that are precisely zoned within the Orleans Community Planning Area. For the most part, it is currently zoned unclassified, as are the isolated, in holdings within Six Rivers National Forest to the north. Along Ishupishi Road, we're recommending, these are areas that are planned residential agriculture and have 20 or 40 or above density, one dwelling unit per 20 acres or 40 acres. And we're recommending the B5 combining zone to be consistent with the lots, lot sizes that are there and the density. Other changes in the area are, you know, along those lines. Here is an area that's planned industrial and that is a mineral extraction site. We're recommending the heavy industrial zone and the MR combining zone. There's a small bit of areas, area that's planned village center and we're recommending the rural mixed use zone, MU2. At a public meeting in Orleans, looking at the land use maps, landowner of the property behind that mixed use zone was concerned that his property wasn't included within the mixed use zone. And I indicated to him that this related to the land use designations and he suggested that staff bring forward a change in the general plan so that his properties that front along Highway 96 there be planned for, so that it could also be zoned for mixed use and we'll do that following on in the process. The zones in, on the south side of the river are primarily the rural residential agriculture zone where the lot size is consistent with the general plan and the current lot configuration. This is the Garberville area and you see that there's a lot of, you see the, this green line represents the airport influence area, so all of those areas that even if the, we're not recommending a change in the underlying zone, we're recommending the application of the AP combining zone, which isn't currently there. There's other instances where we're not recommending changes in the principal zone, but we're applying the MR combining zone to active permitted mineral operations. We're recommending around the airport, there were zones that allowed lot sizes that were significantly smaller than what the airport compatibility zones would allow. And so we're aligning the minimum lot size with the airport compatibility zones. And the areas going up Alderpoint Road, there's, a lot of this area is currently zoned agricultural exclusive and the general plan is a residential land use designation. It's the residential agriculture land use designation. And so we're recommending that change from the AE zone to the AG zone, agriculture general, with the B5 combining zone to match the density in that area. The next is a snapshot of the Breisland area. This is downtown Breisland as it is. Breisland is planned rural community center, so we're recommending the application of the rural mixed use zone. There's a lot of lands that are unclassified surrounding Breisland and we're recommending, for the most part, the application of the Agriculture General Zone. There's some parcels on south of Breisland along Breisland-Thorn Road where the property owners, looking at our online GIS, requested that the FR Forestry Recreation Zone be applied to their parcel and some of the surrounding parcels. Property owners got together and so we're recommending that consistent with their request. This is Petrolia. This is downtown Petrolia. Petrolia was, was and is a rural community center and we're recommending the MU2 rural mixed use zone be applied to Petrolia. Surrounding that area, there's a considerable, considerable amount of areas that are zoned unclassified and a lot of it is planned agriculture grazing and we're recommending the application of the AE zone, agricultural exclusive. The area to the southwest of downtown Petrolia along the Metole Road, those areas are... are also zoned unclassified. And we're recommending the application of primarily the agriculture general zone with the B5 toward the, the higher end of the density range, primarily 20 acres, some five acres along the roadway. The last area is Phillipsville. Phillipsville underwent a significant change with the general plan update where most of the town was planned conservation flood recreation. And the, the community felt that that was inappropriate, given that there's a lot of homes that are built there. And that, that planned designation is appropriate for recreational vehicles that are, that are removed during, after the summer period. So this area was planned a mixture of residential agriculture with a maximum density of one dwelling unit for five acres and residential estates with a maximum density of one acre. And so we're recommending the rural residential agriculture zone, which was originally applied within, in this area. And so we're extending it to, to these areas. There's also a smattering of parcels that are planned mixed use. And we're recommending the urban, I'm sorry, the rural mixed use zone in these areas. Only, only community water is available. And that's the, the overview of how we're applying the, the zones. And we will be doing the notifications to property owners and bringing back a map set for consideration by the planning commission. We did receive one comment letter that I think was forwarded on to the planning commission. And this was a comment from Marissa St. John, specific, specific, well, it, it related to the unclassified and to the Titlow Hill, Hill area. And she's asking when we will describe how the unclassified properties will be, will, when we will provide information so that people can see how specific properties that are currently unclassified, how they're, how we're recommending they'll be zoned. And we will be notifying all of the property owners. And I'm not sure how, if we'll let, if likely by APN, we can have the existing U-zone and show the proposed zone. I'm not sure that we'd make, make available the property owner names. She was also interested why some of the Titlow Hill areas remaining unclassified and some is receiving precise zones. And as I indicated at the beginning, the areas of Titlow Hill that are continuing along in the general plan amendment rezone process, those areas are remaining unclassified because this precise zones and potentially additional B combining zones and other requirements will come out of that process. Let's see if there's, so she also asked if we're using assessor's parcels in our zoning. And assessor's parcels are used. We use that to determine if there's a, a density range. We use that in suggesting what the minimum lot size should be. And she's absolutely correct that some of those assessor's parcels are not legal lots. But that's the best information that we have available to us. And so that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Questions on the staff report? Noah?
Thanks. I'll, I'll be real quick because I know there's, I think there's a couple folks, yeah, who, who have waited to comment. But first of all, I just want to say thank you. That PowerPoint, that presentation clarified this a lot for me. And I just would like to respect, request for my own purposes, but also for the others who, you know, didn't witness this. If you could post this PowerPoint on the website, or perhaps it already is, but I think it, it really helps even in advance of getting maps out to everyone, certainly in advance of the public hearing that it will be upcoming, it would be great for folks to be able to see this if they didn't.
We, we definitely will. And after each of our public meetings where we had a PowerPoint presentation, we've substituted the meeting notice or the PowerPoint for the meeting notice.
Got it.
So people can go back and we'll do that for this meeting as well.
Okay, that's great. And so I can, I can get it and look at it again. And then just a couple of other quick comments. And I'll just mention them both and then let you answer. But one, I'm, I was curious specifically about the forestry recreation zone that had like 1,800 acres or something and how that came about. And frankly, I don't quite remember what it meant. And you mentioned the group of owners around Briceeland. I, I just would appreciate a reminder of what distinguishes that zone. And the other one is that perhaps I missed it, but I, I didn't hear you mention the point that was made in the staff report, that the mineral resources combining zone is being applied not just to those permitted mining operations and SMARAs sites, but also to adjacent and nearby parcels. But, but presumably it's some version of it or a Q-zone tying into the mineral resources zone. I guess I, I may not be getting it precisely right. But, but that was a new change you were underscoring that we should consider is whether we want to add essentially a, a right to mine on a nearby parcel notice to buffer lands around the mining sites.
So to your first question about the FR zone and how or where we're recommending that that be applied. And I showed one instance that was based on property owner request. Other areas where we might apply the FR zone as opposed to the AG zone, and those are the, those are two zones that are, that are appropriate outside of community areas that are planned residential agriculture, that, based on the, the zoning consistency matrix. Those are, those are two zones that are appropriate. And we might choose to recommend the FR zone based on the current application of that zone in an area that has surrounding areas that are zoned unclassified. So just similar to the surrounding area, we'd recommend the FR zone as opposed to the AG zone. If that, does that, does that answer your question?
Can, can you remind me, I know this, we covered this at one point, what, what distinguishes the FR zone from the AG zone in terms of principally permitted uses or what's not allowed? I just don't remember.
There are more, there are some recreation-related principally permitted uses in the FR zone. And I, we could, we could show you the two zones on the screen. The FR zone also, also allows one acre lots, whereas the AG zone is two and a half acre is the minimum parcel size. And in most instances throughout the county, and you know, where it's not now, we're recommending the B5 combining zone, which allows us to specify a lot size larger than one acre.
Okay. I'll just mention that the one instance in the Briceeland area where they requested the FR zone was because they intend to do kind of a version of a special occupancy park or an RV park. It would be more of a glamping sort of an application they're, they're interested in doing. And, and they, they got all their neighbors to sign off on, on that. And so we're modifying the maps to show that whole area as FR.
Interesting. Okay. Thanks.
It's getting late, so I want to, want to make sure that we have a couple of, of folks who have been in the audience. I'm sure they've came here to comment. I'd like to make sure they get their comments in, then we'll bring this back because the, as the commission will have this before us again, and we'll also have a discussion period. So at this time, I would like to open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Joyce King from McKinleville. And more than a comment, I have a question or questions about the TE zone. And I'm concerned about the expansion of, or the permitting of cannabis in forested areas. And I know that that was a concern of this group when that, when that zone classification came up. So, in a, in a headline of an article in the, in the Mad River Union on, you know, one of the page six or someplace in there, it said, and I think this is what it said, "The supervisors approve TE zoning, which will allow cannabis growing in large timber parcels." Is that what that said? I think that that was incorrect, if that's what, do you remember?
John?
Thank you, Chair. No. The, number one, the TE zone as adopted by the board did not allow cannabis as a permitted activity, period. Two, what the board did do, as Mr. Miller mentioned, was that it established, they established a minimum 160 acre lot size for the implementation of TE. So that it, where parcels are currently zoned unclassified, they're not just going to automatically be considered for TE unless they are above 160 acres. That's what that article I think was trying to get at, is that the board identified that TE was most appropriately applied to commercial timber as an alternative to TPZ. And so the commercial timber would be a large land holding of 160 acres or more.
And are there many parcels, timbered parcels in the U classifications that are smaller?
So I think there are in the neighborhood of 300, somewhere between 250 and just shy of 400 that are TE. I heard something new tonight that I hadn't heard before, but very few of those are over 160 acres, if any. And so most of those are smaller.
And so they would be automatically AE?
Yep.
And AE is open to cannabis?
Yes.
So those timbered areas would be?
Not necessarily.
Permissible. But that, anyway, those are my, those are my confusions. And so I was hoping that we could get some.
So, let me just say that the cannabis ordinance does not allow conversion of timberland for purposes of cannabis cultivation. So if there is property that's currently U and it's going to AE and it is identified as timberland, not just in the general plan, but by the Public Resources Code, it is not eligible to be converted into non-timberland use and resulting in cannabis cultivation. That would not be allowed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker. That was it. Well, then we'll close this section of public comment. And now we'll come back. And Mike, I think we left off with your hand in the air.
I just had a question and, and some of it was answered there. But some of these illegally divided parcels that are supposed to be 160 acres or more with whatever the designation is, and they're, you know, smaller illegally divided and they're that way right now. Was it the direction that we were not going to allow anything further? And part of my question was, was about cannabis growing, especially in a TE or a TPZ zone, the TE zone specifically for these illegally divided parcels. And I think I heard that it is not available for them.
So currently, there is no provision to allow cannabis cultivation in the TE. So, and then in terms of rezoning parcels, we typically do not do legal lot determinations for every piece of property that's being rezoned. As Mr. Miller said, that we typically use assessor's parcel numbers, which are not necessarily the legal parcels. So there, there may be parcels out there that show up as being less than they would be if a parcel legality determination had been completed.
Yeah, I had a question about the Titlow Hill area as well. So some of the people who wrote in mentioned that there were now 20 acre illegal parcels. And I see that you've planned to rezone most of that area AE. And AE has a minimum of 60 acres. Is that correct? And so there, there would not be a recognition of a 20 acre parcel that's AE?
The, the application of the zone doesn't provide recognition for the, you know, parcel status. And we're, we're applying outside of the area that, the outside of the properties that are continuing to participate in the general plan and rezone, we're applying a zone consistent with the plan. And AE zone is, is, the minimum parcel size is 60 acres. And to the extent there are illegal lots outside of that area, the property owner would need to go through the determination and status process to, to, to address that.
Oh, thank you. So, so nothing, you didn't address this with any kind of special, okay.
Thank you. I just, and maybe this goes without saying, but thought I'd throw it out there anyway, is that we may designate parcels AE that don't comply with the 60 acre minimum. That doesn't make them illegal. That makes them non-conforming. So that would be acceptable under the general plan and the zoning.
Thank you.
Question for you on timber conversion, because that was one of the speaker's main concerns. Is the conversion of timberland or the prohibition on the conversion of timberland for cannabis, is that a county and the state position or is that just the county position?
So it comes from two different places. It comes first within the CMMLO or 1.0. The environmental analysis that was done identified that there would be no conversion of timberland. So in order to go back and convert timberland under 1.0, we would need to modify the environmental document, which would be a Herculean task. 2.0, the CCLUO identifies within the ordinance itself, there won't be conversion of timberland.
Okay. And so is now, is the, is the state in addition to that or is the state just a separate criteria?
State's separate criteria.
Thank you. Thank you. Noah?
It's, it's a follow-up on that same point. And I really do appreciate Ms. King coming up and asking about it because I had been a little bit unclear myself what the implications of, of first hour and then the supervisor's discussion rejection of modification of the timber exclusive zone would be within, with respect to cannabis, where it doesn't now exist on forested parcels that are planned timber. And, and I guess I just, you know, I, I appreciate the, the point that the director made, but it's, I still want to make sure that it's, I, I'd have to go back and see that article that, that she is referencing. But at the time, I remember some concern, some, some chit-chat that, you know, one of the implications of our or the supervisors not having ultimately adopted the timber exclusive zone, which explicitly says cannot be used for cannabis cultivation, is that many of these forested unclassified parcels would end up ag general or ag exclusive. Would it be both or would, it would be, sorry, can you?
Ag exclusive is an, timberland is an open space land use designation. So ag general, which isn't an open space zone, wouldn't be available to apply?
Would not be available, but ag exclusive would. Thank you. Right. Right, AE. And so, it certainly could have left some folks with the impression that, on its face, you know, I've got this parcel that was unclassified, but it was forested, it was planned timber, but now, it's AE, and AE is compatible, at least may be compatible, with cannabis use. Now, you know, the response that the Director gave to Ms. King was clarifying, but doesn't totally reassure me that this may not remain the impression of landowners, I guess, you know? And I know this is outside of what we or you can do about it at this point, because the supervisors ended up taking our discussion about timber-exclusive and adopting it with a set of requirements that, as I understood your report, are basically impossible to meet. So, therefore, we can't, at this point, apply that. But I just wanted to express that the concern that I think was expressed by the public speaker, that there could be some uncertainty out there about whether the use of AE zoning, or the application, or the recommended application of AE zoning to tens of thousands of acres, it's not hundreds of thousands, but it's tens of thousands of acres, the formerly unclassified land could give either those landowners or others the impression that cannabis will be allowed. So, I guess, I guess my takeaway is that the planning department probably needs to do, you know, some messaging around this point, if nothing else, because it is a concern out there among some who may not follow all the levels of fine print that attach to these zones.
Melanie?
Yeah, I think that it would be really great if that could be a layer on the Humboldt County GIS site, so, you know, the area is showing where cannabis is allowed. I think that would be helpful for the public, to have a simple map. It's just an idea.
Director?
I can't envision a map that simple, because the ordinance specifically allows cannabis in certain zones, doesn't allow cannabis in other areas within those zones, such as within timberland. And so, part of the struggle is, is that one of the debates we often get into is, what is timberland? Because timberland is that area capable of supporting timber. And so, in many cases, there is the whole encroachment of dug fur into new areas continually regrowing, and the forester can address that far better than I can. So, it's not just a simple map. And it would be nice to just shade an area and say, yep, you can do it there, but there are areas within forested areas that are not technically timberland, and then, the areas within timber, within areas that are largely timberland, that look like they're not timberland, but really are timberland. And you just can't do that from the air.
Right. But I was saying, I was actually thinking more from a planning point of view, so, we know that, you know, where permits have been issued, and we know which areas are in the process, quite a few still, and I was thinking there might be a layer possible with that.
We actually have that.
Wonderful. Is that available to the public?
We've not made it available to the public primarily because, up until this point, many of the cannabis cultivators have not wanted their properties targeted.
Right, yeah. I can see how that could be a safety concern. Nonetheless, you know, just from a natural resources, planning point of view, it'd be nice to eventually, and I don't mean it has to happen, you know, right now, but it would be nice to eventually have a layer on there, because it really is a great site, so that we could easily see where cannabis is generally permitted.
Well, to maybe follow on your point, if I may, you know, I understand that it's actually a very parcel-specific determination as to whether it could happen on this parcel, but perhaps your suggestion is that a layer that would highlight the eligible zones, the parcels that are zoned one of the eligible zones for cannabis, and which meet the minimum parcel size. And if we just incorporated those two, then you could say this parcel might be eligible. It would still have to meet other requirements before you could know that it would.
Yes, thank you. That's correct. That's what I...
Right.
Now, that would strike me as being pretty Herculean for...
Yeah, I don't know how that easy even that is.
It would be much simpler just to make a simple list of this has to be present in order for a cannabis permit. And one of them is going to be, if there's trees there, you need a conversion permit, and the 2.0 ordinance and the EIR document underlying that says that you're not, we're not going to convert timberland to grow cannabis. And so, the only place that you would get a cannabis grow on timber is if it was pre-existing and fell under the 1.0. Is that not correct? It'd be much, to me, it'd be much simpler to identify in that manner than trying to go through, because I think your staff's already swamped.
Yeah, yeah. I would agree with you on that. And just to add in just another point relative to pre-existing, is that the window is closing. The ordinance identifies that December 31st of this year, there is no more pre-existing. The window for our sites is already closed last December 31st. Now, pre-existing credit for that is closing this December 31st. So, you know, the areas in timberland, if they're not already permitted, there won't be any opportunity to be permitted anymore after December.
Well, that, I think that might do, making sure that we get that message out, might allay a lot of the public concern. I think somewhere I saw a letter or memo...
Press release.
Press release, okay, I saw that. And, you know, that, we need, might want to make sure that that was well-received.
So, one of the other things that we're going to be putting out there, too, is that we want to work with those who are pre-existing cultivators, that are the smaller, of the smaller variety, and we're working on a proposal that if they come in and comply with certain just basic criteria, that we can get them through for a certain cost and then a certain timeframe, and just make it super simple for the folks that are basically less than 3,000 square feet.
We've had, it looks like a lot of our discussion has kind of revolved around timber or the TE, and I just, I just kind of want to make a clarification based on John's report, just to make sure I understood it right. Because on the Board, you had that TE was in italics, "available." So, I'm taking that to mean that that would be the same as TPZ, it would have to be landowner-initiated. Is that correct? That's compared to county-initiated?
That's correct. And, you know, there are, there are parcels that are greater than 160 acres that have unclassified lands on them. And we initially did a, we did an evaluation based on parcel size containing unclassified lands. We subsequently did an analysis of the area unclassified within parcels, and didn't find any instances where there was 160 acres within a parcel that was unclassified and planned timberland.
With the T underlayment?
With, with the T, yeah, T land use designation, planned timberland. And so, that, that's why we didn't notice anybody, and we didn't, we aren't recommending the TE zone be applied, but as you said, like TPZ is available for landowners who may request that during this zoning planning process.
So, that's why it's going into the regulation language phase is strictly as an alternative for a landowner, should they desire to go that way. Another question, you had, I think it was under the PRD, you had saying that the PRD can be used, or I guess is compatible with agriculture. And my question is, is, do timber activities fall under that definition of agriculture?
So, the PRD, based on the general plan, can be applied to lands planned agriculture and lands planned timberland. So, it would be appropriate for somebody who has large holdings of land planned timberland to do subdivisions, and if a lot of the land is TPZ, then it would have to meet the subdivision requirements for TPZ land, but this would be available.
And the TPZ is, what, a 40-acre minimum?
It is a 40-acre minimum, to the extent you meet the requirements to go down to 40 acres.
And I think there was some language talks about that here, I guess it's right there. If you have the, if you apply for the PRD, you can get a density above what would otherwise be allowed. Has there been any discussion amongst the staff as to what that may be, that increased density or clustering?
We've, we've had discussions, some discussions. We haven't, we haven't gone beyond the regulations that are, that have been adopted as part of the zone, specifying what that minimum parcel size may be.
Because I would think that would have a heck of a lot more impact than what we've been discussing over TE. That would be a big one.
But on that point, it's been, what, a year, or maybe not quite a year since we had that, since we went through the proposed zone text amendments, and I thought that one had, at that time, I thought it did include some specificity about what you're asking, which is how much above the default density for residential would it allow? And I say that simply because I remember thinking, this is a great idea, but that level of increase may not be enough to incentivize it. But maybe I'm remembering this wrong?
I remember that also, that it had to be clustered, and I believe it was a maximum of two plus an ADU.
Something like that, right. Okay, so, it wasn't a year ago, I guess. So, just feels like it. But, so, I guess I, since we're on this question, I wondered if we could get back to whatever we did, although I know we're running close to the end of time.
I think that here, it's saying that applicable lot size standards may be modified to carry out the intent of the planned rural development, to allow for that clustering to go below the minimum lot size. And I guess, in exchange, and you're getting up to 1.5 times the maximum density...
1.5.
You are, in return, you're permanently conserving the remaining agger timberlands. So, this provides for you going below the minimum lot size. And, you know, I think we've used five acres in discussions before. There's no, it's not a part of the regulations, but we've talked about five-acre parcels along the roadways.
Got it. But I think it's the 1.5 multiplier that I was remembering. I don't know if that goes to your point.
Yeah, I didn't remember what it was at all.
Yeah.
I do remember the 95%.
And that was mainly to help families that wanted to have more clustering, or another second or third place there on the homestead, so to speak.
Well, we're starting to get late, folks. I'd like to wrap it up about another five minutes.
Just a real quick one, just because it was, it was called out in the staff report, if you couldn't go quickly back to your presentation tonight, to the mineral resources combining zone, I just don't, I don't see anything on the page there that says that it applies to surrounding parcels, and I just wonder if, and since that was actually something that your staff report specifically proposed could be an alternative, is maybe you don't apply it to the surrounding parcels, I just wondered if there's anything more. I mean, that's, that's a change, right? We would be applying this designation, this combining zone, to parcels within 1,000 feet of a permitted mining parcel? Is that what it was?
The mineral resources combining zone has notification procedures for properties within 1,000 feet to notify the operator, if there's a discretionary permit, and for the operator to notify parcels within 1,000 feet, and for conditions of approval, applying the notification on the deed for properties outside. And we had presented to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors an alternative to apply the MR combining zone within 1,000 feet, and we weren't directed to do so. I think that's still available for your commission to recommend.
I see now. Okay. So, this is correct. That would apply only to the parcels with the permitted or SMRA mining operations, and not the buffer. So, it's the, I guess I was confusing the combining zone with the notification requirements for the surrounding parcels. Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Well, I think this is going to come back before us on October 3rd, if I read this right, and seeing the hour of the night, I think perhaps it might be appropriate to get a motion for continuance, and this will come back.
I just wanted to add that the 160 minimum for PRD, that's what it still is, correct? 160?
I think the PRD can be applied at the request of the landowner to any parcel that's got a resource plan designation.
Okay. So, there's no set?
No, the idea was to make it fungible, make it, make it apply in many different situations to accommodate as many different requests as may come forward.
Okay. So, I mean, given that we know now that 160, there aren't very many of them, you've just gone over, like, a large swath of the county probably would not be enrolling in this. And so, if it were hypothetically 160, we're only talking about, with a 95% roll, eight acres. So, the clustering would have to occur within the eight acres. So, it's not, so, to address some of the concerns from the public and from some of the commissioners, that, you know, the clustering might not be totally clustered, and it could, you could have multiple homes now spread out all over this new PRD land, if it were this hypothetical 160, and it's a 95% roll, we're only talking about, we're talking about eight acres, which seems reasonable to me, because we all know that there aren't that many very, very large parcels from the TE discussion previous.
Just to clarify, the TE discussion, we were identifying just those lands that are zoned unclassified, that are planned timberland. There are a lot of 160-acre parcels that aren't zoned unclassified, and there are many parcels that are larger than 160 acres that aren't zoned unclassified, and that wasn't a part of our analysis.
Okay. But nonetheless, I just wanted to add for the public, and maybe for some of us, that, you know, just to do the math, it's not a huge amount of land we're talking about with, I mean, the 95% roll ensures that the clustering truly is clustered.
And to be clear, that's actually... And to be clear, that, that's actually, I appreciate that, but that's not my concern. My, my concern is that it doesn't allow enough increase in development privileges within that eight acres to necessarily incentivize putting 95% under a conservation easement. I mean, if you already wanted to do a conservation easement, it's a great deal. If you weren't so inclined, I'm just not sure that 1.5 times the density is enough to make you want to do it.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think it's probably the tax savings more than anything else.
With that, I think we probably need a motion for continuance.
I'll, I'll move, close a public hearing here, and continue the meeting to October 3rd, 2019, for final action, suggested modifications.
We have a motion. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for continuance to October 3rd. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed. The matter is continued. And I will ask the, before we adjourn, I'll ask the director if he has any comments or items of wisdom to impart upon us.
Well, I, I do have a request for you. I had committed to send you all an email describing the hearing schedule for Humboldt Wind. And that was when we were anticipating having the EIR, final EIR, done a little sooner. Right now, the expected date of having the final EIR done is the end of October, which would put the public hearings with the planning commission in November. What I would still ask is that we have three dates for a hearing, using two of the regular hearing dates, November 7th and November 21st. Thanksgiving is the 28th. And then, could we have a special meeting on November 14th? And could we also start at 4:00?
Okay. So, essentially, much like we discussed last time, but pushed back.
Yes.
About a month, yeah.
Yes.
And 4:00 for all three, is that what we're proposing?
Yes.
Okay.
Gives about 15 hours of, of, of public hearing time.
Great.
Or workshop and public hearing time.
Is every, is everyone agreeable? And can everyone adhere to the 27th, the day before Thanksgiving?
Not the 27th, 7th, 14th, and 21st.
21st, okay, all right.
And I'll, I'll send out an email on that.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, sure.
All right. Any of the commissioners have any comments they want to add before we, we close tonight? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the September 19th meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission.